Well, good morning everybody. I'll declare the 25th of March meeting of Tipuna Kurrero open. Um, please note, councillors, I think we have to keep reminding ourselves that because this is being livestreamed, we need to remember to use our microphones, switch them on when you want to speak and switch them off when you've finished speaking. So let's get to the agenda itself. Apologies, I have no apologies. Public forum, we have no request for anyone to speak in the public forum. Are there any conflict of interest declarations? There being none, we'll move on to notification of extraordinary business, of which I'm told there is none as well. So that brings us to item five on the agenda, which is confirmation of the 4th of March meeting of Tipuna Kurrero. I'm going to move those minutes as a true and correct record. Mike Duncan, there's a seconda. Anybody have any corrections, issues they want to raise? No? That being so, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, those against carried. So that brings us to the substantive items on the agenda. The first being item 6.1, which is the Porirua City traffic bylaw changes. So I would like to move the report with the following recommendation, which is in the report, which you'll see, omitted. And that is add Parimata Crescent, Parimata, on its eastern side, commencing eight metres south of the boundary between 36, numbers 36 and 38. Parimata Crescent extending in a northerly direction following the eastern curb line for forty-seven and a half metres. Um, so we haven't, there hasn't been a chance to have enough consultation on that, so that'll come to a future meeting. And so I'd like to move the bylaw with that omitted. Do I have a seconda, please? Mayor Duncan, I was gonna... Mayor Baker! Sorry. I don't know who I should apologise to. Okay, okay. So now I'm going to open the report for discussion. I'm not sure whether we need officers to go through this, so I'm going to take it as read. Does anyone have any questions to ask of officers around this? Yes, councillor Ford.
Thank you Chair, just one question. So with these yellow lines going in, they're enforced by our parking, our roading team, just want to confirm that?
Good question.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so further to that, those bylaws are only, I guess, as effective as they are enforceable, correct?
Well, basically, they mean something in themselves and generally people will obey them, basically. However, if there are issues with them, then that's when the enforcement comes into play.
Okay, so specifically to the ones that are being put in at conclusion, I know there's a kindergarten on the other side. Is there an opportunity for our roading team to have some meaningful engagement with our communities around schools and stuff? So that, I mean, I guess the point I'm trying to make is any time we go out to our community, it's normally to seek feedback on things that we are going to enforce, like the yellow lines. But can we look at some sort of meaningful solutions for places like schools and where there are businesses? I know there are a lot of yellow lines around schools, but still, people need to go and pick up kids and drop off kids, it's always going to happen. So those issues or those, they're always going to exist. So is there...
Yep, so definitely, as in the previous council meeting and the month earlier, we discussed the school safety programme, which is, that's where we'll deal with the wider issues around parking and safety around the schools and that type of thing. So we want to deal with it as one thing, rather than trying to do it as a piecemeal approach. These sorts of traffic bylaw changes are things where it's just a traffic safety issue, really. We're trying to rectify that issue now, rather than allow it to continue. And then we will come back and actually do the school safety work, which is a bit wider, yeah.
Is there something to add to that? I see you coming to the table. Need your microphone, yep.
Through the chair, we do actually liaise with the schools and we send out teams in the mornings and in the afternoons when we've got free staff available to just monitor the school drop-offs. We tend to not infringe people until they've been warned a few times. And all breaking the lines are also enforceable by police.
Does that... Yeah, have a second question, councillor Ford.
So just further to that, I note that on the conclusion strip with kindergarten opposite, there is no feedback from them, so what sort of engagement, you know, even just to be in support of the yellow lines, there was nothing against the yellow lines as well. So you're telling me that you go into the schools, do you go into the kindergartens as well?
We tend to go where we receive complaints from principals and, you know, and school staff. And it's normally relating to the drop-off of primary school children. As far as the consultation before the lines are placed, it's more loose area, we tend to enforce it after it's put down.
So I guess your question is, was the kindergarten consulted?
Yes, they were consulted and, yeah, that's, as you've seen, we didn't get any feedback from them. So taking that, whether that from them is whether it's actually an issue in terms of whether there's a parking issue there in terms of capacity for them. So perhaps that's not the case, so, yeah.
Any further questions? I mean, I think it was a good question to raise, councillor Ford. I know the schools, a few schools that I'm familiar with, it does tend to be a bit of a melee around three o'clock, so whatever we can do to help this is going to be beneficial and ongoing. So that said, I'll now, and there being no further discussion, I'm looking around, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, those against carried. Thank you, guys. That moves us to item 6.2 on the agenda, deliberations for dog control policy and bylaw. I'm going to move the report with an additional chair's recommendation, which has been brought to our attention by Russell Morrison, actually, which was well done, picked up, that I'm adding this point, that we add Parimata Beach to the restricted areas section of Schedule 1 in both the I'm trying to read it, dog control policy and bylaw. It was just an omission from a discussion we had the other week. So I'm going to move that, the motion that we already had, with that recommendation. Do I have a seconda? Yes, thank you. Sorry, councillor Waddle. Councillor Hayward.
Order, order. Thank you, Mr Chair. I move to propose an amendment to recommendation 2B, and which would read under this amendment, approve the phrase reduced registration fee category in place of responsible dog owner. There's been some interaction by councillors over the past few days in relation to this motion. The intention of it is that we should start at the base of our bylaw, which is that we expect everybody in Porirua who has a dog to be responsible. And in the vast case of instances, it is. However, one of the reasons why responsible dog has been left off as a category is that it creates a stigma where individuals, some individuals who have tried to do the best they can still do not meet the criteria necessary to be considered a responsible dog. It has a stigma attached to it, the wording of responsible dog. Let's actually lift the responsible dog to the higher plane. And instead of using a credited or select owner category, the purpose of a reduced fee is, this category is to reduce the fees. So it should have a title that says exactly what it's going to do on the tin. I think that, you know, Heta and Hawehepa six-pack are going to look at this and they're going to see that and they're going to be far more understanding of what that's trying to achieve. So I put this motion forward. Kia ora kato.
Thanks councillor Hayward. Before we move, can I have a seconda? Yes, Kylie. So I'll open this recommendation, this proposed amendment for discussion and we'll discuss this first before we put the substantive motion about the bylaws. So does anyone else want to comment on councillor Hayward's recommended amendment? Councillor Duncan.
Yeah, look, I'm ambivalent about this. I don't think you'll ever get wording that suits everybody. But with the chewing and throwing of emails, there was a message from the chief executive that made a lot of sense to me. I wondered if we could get Wendy to enlighten us on that.
Yes, interesting that I can be enlightening on dog control. So I guess the officer's advice around this is that the purpose of the reduced registration fee is not to reduce the registration fee, it is to recognise that some dogs are less risky than others. And so the neutering and fencing and other requirements for what we have variously called responsible, were credited, selected, recognises those differences in dog ownership. And there are a number of reduced fees, as I sent out yesterday, not just for those purposes, there are a number of other factors. However, having said all that, this is not a policy issue, this is a communications issue. So we're not stuck in a rut on that. It may mean that our staff down at the counter have to explain more than they would normally explain. But it's not central to the policy intent of this paper.
Are there any other questions that people want to ask about this amendment? I just assume that it doesn't present any other issues in the in the policy itself, in terms of terminology and being able to make sense of anything, that's what you're assuring us. Okay, thank you. So there being no other... All right, councillor Sayu.
Yes. So just clarification on that, councillor Hayward. So with what you've said here, 2B, so you're saying is phrase part of that? You got down and parenthesis, approve the phrase, so phrases...
No.
So it's just reduced registration fee category?
Yes.
All right. So I'll now, we have a seconda, I'm putting that amendment that to recommendation 2B, that it read approve the phrase reduced registration fee category in place of responsible dog owner. So that's what we're voting on. So all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against, carried. Well now, okay, you want it recorded? No.
It's on video.
Yep, too late. So you had your chance councillor Morrell. So I'm now going to open the substantive bylaw for discussion with that chair's recommendation. Don't forget that we've missed out a couple of things that we'll add back in around Parimata Beach. So councillor Morrell, you would like to...
Yes, I can't believe dogs, we spend more time talking about dogs than we do on our annual plan, but never mind. Item 32, which talks about, I was particularly impressed with the presentation from the Porirua Bay community regarding the the penguins down there. And item 32 says, makes a comment, Porirua beaches do provide habitat for wildlife. However, it should be noted that most of the coastline within the Porirua district boundaries is inaccessible to dog walkers, thus providing adequate protection for wildlife in addition to signage at key places. Now, if I remember, the representation made from Porirua Bay was that they would like a dusk till dawn the dogs on lease situation, and I have some sympathy for that. And I think that item number 32, that statement is rather sort of a very broad-based statement, which really, in my view, is not really accurate. So I just question and want, asking the officers, I guess, was there any thought given to the Porirua Bay? Because it is a coastline which is a little bit more unique than some other areas. And I'm thinking that the dusk to dawn would work and particularly with dogs on leases in that part of the world. So just a comment from the officers.
Can we have a response from...
So I can give a response to that over here, hello. So again, I'll bring us back, we deliberately didn't look at the dog control areas during this review because it was done in 2017. So we excluded that from the review entirely. The other point I'll make is I think it'd be very difficult for us to enforce a dusk till dawn prohibition at Porirua Bay. I don't think, and perhaps James can give us some words on that, but I don't think we'd be able to actually enforce it.
Yes, James, you have a... In a minute, councillor Morrell. Yep, something additional to add.
Yes, thank you, through the chair. There is an obligation under the Act already to make sure that all dog owners have control of their dogs, whether they're on a leash or not. And if a dog owner happened to take their dog down to Porirua Bay and it did end up attacking a penguin, they would be in breach of the Act and liable to be prosecuted, whether or not it's on a leash. So it's just one thing to bear in mind, as far as the all-encompassing rules of the dog control Act go. So we don't actually need to cover everything in the bylaw, which is already covered under the Act.
Right, so you're telling us it is already covered under the Act?
Yes, yes it is.
If an incident were to occur. So councillor Morrell, you want to...
Doesn't help the penguin, that might be killed by a dog, does it, if it is straight after the event? But however, I mean, you know, I find that sort of, you talk about, you know, we put up, it's not enforceable. Well, you could say that what bylaw is enforceable then, we put up signs and people read signs. So if we put up a sign, you can't have your dog on this part of the world without a leash between dusk and dawn. I mean, what's the, you know, it's a sign, it's part of the, you know, it's the, yeah, I can't quite fathom why we, you know, we you know, it's, it can't be enforced because we seem to just put up signs, I see it count in offices.
So you see what?
No, that's right, sorry.
Yeah, well, okay, well, I'll find it, yeah. Thank you for telling me. Is it going to be Nick that responds or James? No, thank you.
Through you Chair, I think you raise a really important issue and Porirua Bay did do a really good job at advocating for their wildlife. We did discuss it a lot in addition to what James and Hayden have mentioned. And when we looked at the signage, we actually thought there's more opportunity in educating with the Department of Conservation and looking at our signage programme. Because actually, it's about awareness, isn't it? Whatever the law does, that's retrospective, it is about education and it's not good enough down there. In fact, it's not good enough across a lot of the city. So we would rather invest our time and our money working with DOC and those communities around consistent signage that protects not just wildlife at Porirua Bay, but the Parimata, Camborne Walkway also has it Plymouth in. So it's a live issue and DOC is really the specialist in this space. But we can support the signage and education and we'd rather do that once and do it well because we own that it's not good enough at the moment. So I think that's where the work, I hope, make a bigger difference. Thank you.
Are you, okay councillor, I mean, I think those are points well made on both sides. But I think the signage thing and working with DOC etc is a great way to go. Councillor Trolin.
Thank you Chair.
Councillor Wehapi.
Sorry, just quickly further to that, Nick, I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit further around if we're going to be looking at improving our signage, what a potential timeline on that would look like. So can we expect anything to change in the next 12 months, for example?
Through you Chair, yes, we would like to start a project this, sorry, the next financial year. So we've just got to put a business case together and work with the Parks team because actually there's a lot of synergy between us and Parks and start a project plan, which we would bring to you. We've certainly got that message really clearly in its time.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor Wehapi, my apologies.
No problem. Just I echo councillor Morrell's, you know, around the Porirua Bay beach. And I go over to number 31, and I think it's number 31. We do realise that dogs do pose a threat to wildlife. However, with the Dog Control Act, it includes sufficient provision for dog owners to be prosecuted. I don't think that in the whole time that I've been on council, I have ever seen a owner being prosecuted for their dog attacking penguins, particularly in Fittidaia, because the dog was long gone after the fact. So can I, is that, am I correct in saying that there hasn't been any prosecution in the last four years?
James?
Through the chair, to my knowledge, no, and I'm also not aware of any actual complaints. Yeah.
Okay, so that takes me obviously to the fact that there are some very entitled people in the community who will take their dog on an off-leash area regardless of whether it's on leash or not. So I guess, backing up what councillor Morrell was saying, it's about kind of getting in there, you know, and actually do agree with Nick, with education. But I don't think that signage is actually going to be the answer to our problems when it comes to it. It's actually not allowing dogs in a specific place at all. The second thing was around the signage, which you've already covered. But I just want to know, wasn't so long ago that we had already redone all the signage for that? And when you say improving signage, is that just like dog parks and beaches? Or does that include the whole of the dog exercise areas? Because I can imagine that would be quite an expensive exercise.
Through you Chair, you're right, it is, can be, an expensive exercise. And part of the business case will be exploring the options of the scope. So how, what can we afford, but also achieve the improvements we need to make? So we haven't started that journey, but you're right, Kylie, that's a part that we need to bring to you because you're going to be part of that decision and you're going to tell us what you're comfortable to invest in.
So councillor Wehapi, you're okay with...
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you, and I appreciate that. But I think that if we're going to do it next time, we're going to have to do it really well because we've just done it recently and it's obviously not worth it.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Sayuli.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just a few questions regarding, there's some, I think it's 14.1 talks about people removing dog, you know, feces. And also there's another one here too about mangy dogs, you know, being allowed...
Mangy dogs.
Mangy dogs. So my question is, you know, because we're relying on the integrity of people here. My question is regarding in any other way, when the dogs are registered, if they are registered, is that information given out to the owner just to know their responsibilities?
Good question. James, yeah?
Through the chair, we, I believe we used to hand out an information pack for a first-time dog owner, which is something that we'd like to reintroduce. So it's a little information booklet that comes with your first registration. And for owners of dogs that have had dogs for some time, we include an information pamphlet with the registration invoice each year, which does cover off the main basics, for example, cleaning up after your dog if you poop somewhere, yeah.
Another follow-up question from councillor Sayu.
Yeah, just a separate question. On 21.1, it talks about where it goes, okay. Talks about fee paid when seven days of the receipt of that notice, it may be sold, destroyed or otherwise disposed of in such a manner as the council thinks fit. And after the expiry of that period, the council might dispose of the dog. So what's, what does that mean, disposed of the dog?
Through the chair, what that actually means is that the council has several ways it can dispose of the dog. It can rehome the dog, it can euthanise the dog and it can give the dog back if all fees are paid within that seven days.
All right.
That's actually law, not bylaw, it's just repeated in the bylaw.
Councillor Hawehepi, you have another question?
Sorry, just following on that with seven days, there is provision in there for 21 days, though isn't there in extreme circumstances?
Yes, through the chair, we have made the availability for, if people approach us and they sign up to a sort of a contract, yes, we do allow them time to pay off, we always have and we've just made it formalised.
Right, councillor Ford.
Sorry, I don't have a dog, but I'm just, I'm just curious. I think councillor Sayuli maybe ignited this question. And it's around the education of owners, potential owners. So you give them a pamphlet, there is no, like, I'm just thinking, when you go to adopt a child and of course this is nowhere near the same, but it is a live animal that you're adopting. Is there education, maybe SPCA provides it for potential parents of the dogs? Or is there any of that sort of education, as opposed to just handing out a pamphlet to someone?
Through the chair.
Yep.
At the moment, there's only the information that animal control officers will provide if, you know, they've asked a question or they see people at the dog park. What we're looking at introducing, hopefully, is an information night, maybe held each quarter. And in conjunction with, you know, the lady that presented from the puppy school, she's actually meeting with me tomorrow. And we're looking at having an information evening for new dog owners, which will cover the law and tips on training and all that sort of thing.
I'm now sorry to bring this to an end, but we do have some other things that we have to get through. I think we've had a pretty substantive discussion on dogs or the bylaw. I'm now going to put the motion, the substantive motion, all those in favour? Those against, carried. Thank you very much councillors for that discussion. We'll now move on to item 6.3, which is also substantive. Proposed long-term plan for 2021 to 51, our consultation document. I'm going to move the report with the addition of a recommendation seven, which is approve the changes to the consultation document and supporting information as tabled. We do have these tabled here in front of us. So I'm going to move that with that additional number seven, seconded by councillor Ford. I'm going to take the documents as read because we don't want to go through all those again. But I will ask for, I will ask for any comments on the documents. Councillor, sorry, Mayor Baker.
I'm getting lots of names this morning. Well, like you, I'd like to thank the staff for all the work. And I'd like to note that we have done what people have asked for, infrastructure and the roading, where we've put our extra funds. So I do hope people out there get involved in the consultation and do support what we've done. I know that we are looking at rate rises, not nearly as high as Wellington, thank goodness. But this is definitely a plan for the future and we actually need to get on with it. So thank you for your work.
Thanks Mayor Baker. Does anyone else want to, councillor Hayward?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm just going to mihie first and then I'll get, and I'll translate afterwards, if that's okay. I share the sentiments of the mayor and thank you, Mr Chair, and to those officers who have worked so diligently to get to this point. Also, I'm mindful that although my comments are to the chair, they are also to those watching at home, kiara, and for posterity. I do have some fakaro, which I think is useful in terms of... I do have some fakaro which I think is useful in terms of my qualified support for this motion. I think it's important that in helping my community that we understand the challenges as we seek their import. We've included a corridor about the living wage and we have been bold on finding a way to raise revenue through the parking spaces review. I've also read through the documentation and I can, as I spotted, there is provision for us to introduce water metering but not volumetric charging, which I'm happy to say is a good thing, not have charging on the corridor for this occasion. We do have in the plans around community spaces, but I still think that we could have done a great deal more and been consistent around the recreation spaces. I think about Norse Rugby, who are keen to look at doing further development of their training spaces up at Putidua Park. I'm also thinking of Putidua Tag and Rugby League, who also want to look at spaces around trying to enhance pride in their clubs. And at the moment, this is a thirty-year plan, we're not talking about that as much. I do want to, I agree with the mayor's sentiment, a lot has gone into the infrastructure spend. I'm mindful of former MP Pete Hodgson, who said he had sweet FA, now you've got two times sweet FA. But it's important that we've done a lot more on that space. One thing that I am mindful of however, is that infrastructure spend is, you know, coming a lot from debt. And I wanted to thank staff for helping me check my numbers as I worked through the consultation document. In there, there is a table which I modified. I've got copies of it if you all want to see it, but I'll put it up on Facebook afterwards. That's the, that's the table, I've added two rows to it. And I've had the numbers checked by council officers and I thank them for that. At the most, so at any point during the next ten years, we have a minimum of about eighty million dollars that we could borrow more. I think is probably the best way for me to describe what I'm trying to say here. And at no point do we go over in that ten-year period, two hundred and twenty-nine percent of our covenant, our revenue in that year, in any one year. So if we recall, we changed the, our financial policies last year to change our covenant from two hundred and fifty percent to two hundred and eighty percent. At no point did we get to two hundred and fifty percent, we haven't even got to two hundred and eighty percent. So the gap we're talking about here is eighty million dollars. Eighty million dollars, that, yeah, it's headspace. It could mean that if there's an act of God, that we could have some money on call to, so to speak, pull out the credit card and fix some of those roads and so forth, that's fine. But eighty million, come on guys, you know? I think that, you know, the public should be asking ourselves, have we borrowed enough? Because we could, financially, we could. We could further fast-track the renewals on our three waters infrastructure. We could fully fund, we needed to oneport all. We could do a whole heap of stuff with that eighty million dollars. We're choosing to not put that into, into that area. We know that Wellington Water came to us and said that this is the amount that we want you to consider to catch up and prepare for growth over the next two years. We're here in terms of the current long-term plan. Eighty million doesn't get us the rest of the way there, but it gets us some of the way there. And most importantly as well, the government's reforms around three waters are going to go ahead, and I'm pretty sure they are. This is going to be the last long-term plan where we talk about water infrastructure spend and investment. And so we've got a situation where the new entity is probably going to take our long-term plan for the first three years and use that as the guide as to the future investment as well. Why would not, why would we not be bold enough and actually say, look, we're passing to you our plan? It's a bit more aggressive than we think, but you know what? We also know you'll take that debt on and carry the work as well. So I hope, I really do, as I said in Te Reo. My challenge is that, is for people to use their voice, to not let silence be their dissent. This is, I'm saying this at the start because I want to be open for us to be persuaded as councillors in the final decision-making. That being said, again, I thank you all, kia ora.
Thank you, councillor Hayward. Is there anyone else that wants to? Councillor Waddle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Geoff, you may quite possibly be the most excited person about a long-term plan. But I echo the sentiments that the chair, the mayor and yourself have said this morning. Well done to everyone that's worked on this long-term plan. I hope you give yourselves a damn good pat on the back. I think we're investing the right amount of money in the right amount of areas. And, but there's always room for more. But I think we've, we've come out with a number that will work with our city to get our city moving in the right direction. And now it's time to consult and we've got a fairly robust consultation timeline. And I just hope that we get the numbers of people coming out to speak to that. So, thank you.
You, councillor Waddle. Councillor Trolen?
Thank you very much, Chair. You had a couple of comments I wanted to make on topics that I suspect will surprise no one around the table. But first of all, I actually just wanted to thank officers again for the work on this. And in particular, in my reading of the consultation document, I really felt like we have been heard over the course of the workshops that we've had, going through it, that there weren't glaring omissions, there weren't things I felt that were discussed and could have been included. And I felt that we had lots of opportunities to talk about those things as well. So it meant that we didn't actually have to make a whole bunch of last-minute changes. And it was all there. And thank you very much, the officers, for that. Things I wanted to talk about, first of all, surprise, surprise in relation to climate change. And I'm really proud of the fact that this is the first long-term plan from Putidua City Council that has directly addressed climate change, and it's a really big step for us. And in particular, I'm proud of the fact that we are putting forward the strategic priority of a proactive response to the climate crisis. This draft long-term plan has dedicated climate change funding for expanding our climate change team and beginning proper information gathering. But this is a first small step. Obviously, there are no dedicated capital projects for climate change in this. And as important as this step is, we are still playing a bit of catch-up in terms of where we need to be on our climate response. The challenge that I put down in this area is for us to follow through on this and ramp up with the information that we get from this, with the extra capacity we get from expanding our team, making sure that it does turn into concrete action. On the living wage, I'm really proud that we are taking the step to consult on this. I think that this shows that we're willing to take some leadership in terms of having the conversation with our community around the best ways to ensure that all workers can have dignity in their work. And I think it's a very important conversation for us to have with our community. And I'll also note that this is a really important step on the road towards accreditation as a living wage employer as well, and establishing a long-term ongoing commitment to all of our workers and contractors. So, and we know that that's something that will not only have a direct impact on many individual workers, but I think as well is again us taking leadership in our community and having this conversation, making sure as many people in Putidua as possible are on a genuine living wage. The final thing I wanted to comment on is in relation to rates. There's no denying that the proposed rates rises and impact is steeper than some residents would have hoped. But I'll also acknowledge the growing voice in our community for us to finally bite the bullet and make the investments that are needed on our core infrastructure and in particular on water. It's become very clear to me in my short time on council that many of the issues that we're facing, particularly in the infrastructure space at the moment, exist as the result of decades of sustained underinvestment. And that's not pointing at any one past council in particular, it's a trend that's existed for thirty-plus years. And I'm proud that we are taking the step to have that tough conversation with our community. And I'm really looking forward to hearing back what people have to say about that. And in particular, in the space that councillor Hayward was talking about and whether or not actually we are ramping up our spending, do we have capacity to do a little bit more? And I'm really looking forward to hearing that. So that's all my comments, kia ora, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Trolen. Does anyone else wish to make a comment? Councillor Sayuli?
Thank you, Chair. Just a question, just regarding, kind of goes a little bit along with what I think, what councillor Hayward was saying. But with, you know, we're going, the LTP we're going through at the moment is under the assumption that, you know, we've still got the, you know, the waters and so forth. If we consult with the community and they come up with, you know, with their views, if that reform then kind of comes into effect and we have it no longer, would that impact on any of the, the community voice that they've shared?
So, yeah, I think I'll ask the chief executive to answer that question. I could answer it, but she'll answer it better.
Hopefully. So the water reform, we've been advised by the Department of Internal Affairs that our long-term plan, that implementation of any water reform, and we still have to go through the process of opting out later in the year if we, if we wish to or make a choice which way, whether we stay in or opt out of the water reform process. So the long-term plan that we are setting now, the next three years are what, whatever ultimately you decide in deliberations. So that will flow through. So the community voice there will be, you know, whatever comes through in the oral hearings and whatever you decide will be what happens in the next three years. After that, it is in the new water entity if the council chooses to go that way. And the whole design of how community voice will be considered in that is a live topic. But it is a live topic in the sense that everybody's alive to the notion that it needs to happen and that people need a direct route to the investment in water and what is a priority for local communities. So it is part of the design criteria for the new entity. But in terms of the next three years, this LTP is what will happen.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up from that, please, Chair. I think my thoughts is, you know, you've got, you're dealing with like hundreds of millions of dollars. And if that kind of, that reform comes in, government takes over, then that, would that change the scope of other projects? Possible? Could have?
That's a little bit unknowable, but what I would say is my experience around reform and change processes is that for a few years anyway, any new entity will rely on the work that has already gone. And to, in our case, Wellington Water does our work on water infrastructure. And any new entity will, we would rely on the work that's gone on previously in councils and in our case in Wellington Water.
Thank you. Are there any other councillor Wehapi?
Thank you. A random question, but it's all to do with the community voice. Facebook, Facebook, is Facebook engagement considered as consultation? And no, it's not formal consultation, but is it a form of consultation? Or if not, why?
Question?
Not really. So we obviously keep an eye on it and we report on, we are inclined to put it in our consultation reports at the end of the day. But if people want their voice to be heard, the best way of doing that is through, so we scan all of the social media channels. But if you reliably want your voice heard, Facebook is not the most reliable method for getting that. So providing us with a written submission and following it up with an oral submission is the best way to make sure an individual's voice is heard. So you're the decision-makers, so you decide what factors you take into account when you make decisions. So you all watch Facebook, some of you more than others. So those factors do flow into your decision-making, I'm sure. But in terms of the formal process, we're somewhat prescribed under the Act about how that should take place. So we do, as I say, take the temperature in social media and we have reported on that in the past. So we'll continue to do that, but it's not the most reliable way. And if people ask your advice, I'd suggest you point them into our more formal process.
Thank you, Wendy. Taku?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. And like the rest have commented on the operations and how they've put this together. It's absolutely some fantastic work that's going to move us into the future. Hopefully excited because we are, as you, we're excited, we're all about transformation. We're all about bringing our tamariki and our mukapuna into the next future. Excited to be residents of Putidua. And we're going to put up, we're going to put our money where our mouths is and we're just going to go ahead. We're happy to do a whole lot of things in conjunction with council and making this plan work. We're really excited about the possibilities and that all requires leadership. It all requires good leadership. And from around this table, all eyes are on city council as it transforms, as it works towards some of the objectives in this report. And we're only too happy to work alongside and to ensure that our city as a whole. We live beside an island called Te Mana or Kupé. That would have been a great city name. And that's, that's, that's where we want to be in the next thirty years as we conclude this report, moving on to the next. We want to lift the mana and the sort of vibrancy and richness in the cultures of our city and to assure that we, we have a, have a great city moving forward. I just wanted to put that on the table.
Thanks, Taku. It's great to hear that Nati Tua are working beside us. Are there any other comments that people want to make? No, except that I'm going to have my six months' worth. The, the, which you might be surprised to hear. The only comment that I would make, or the comments that I would make, particularly with regard to councillor Hayward's comments about the eighty million dollars headroom, I think we'll all, all of us sitting around this table will agree that we debated those issues, not so much the eighty million dollars headroom, but how much we should spend particularly on three waters. And what held us back a little, I mean, I would like to spend more as well. Two things, one is rate increases and the other thing is the ability of the industry contractors to do the work. And, you know, I think we need to bear that in mind. So those are the, the two comments that I would make. And eighty million dollars, maybe there's some room there for climate change stuff as well in the future, if required. Yep. So councillor Morau, did that get you going, did it?
No, 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 I won't respond to all of those comments over the other side of the table there at this point, because it is a document going out for consultation. It's amazing what television does though, isn't it? But my point is, just a question of that announcement yesterday of all this money that is going, well, a certain billion dollars that is going to be thrown at councillors, at councils. Have we got any knowledge of anything around that at this point in time? And, you know, is it too early in the piece?
You're referring to the announcement around the three point eight billion in the housing, advanced housing fund, something like that. Not really. We are in communication with Housing and Urban Development about what does this mean. They have advised that there's still some work to go. This is a kind of macro figure and are still working out how that would be divided up. We are of course hopeful that that would flow through to, to our eastern Putidua project. So, but I will let you know as soon as they let me know.
All right. So there being no further comments or questions, I will put the motion regarding the long-term plan consultation document. All those in favour? Those against? Carried. At this stage, I'll now call belatedly on our auditor Grant Taylor to make some comments regarding the audit report.
Kia ora, Tato. Just very briefly, good news, the audit report is unmodified, which is not the case across the sector. So order the Koreiro this morning commending the efforts of the officials and getting a document that is of a higher quality and fit for purpose in terms of its objective, i.e. seeking feedback from your community. I think I've done a few of these with Putidua and it's probably, it's definitely the one based on the best set of information. So you'll see in our proposed wire draft report, it will be signed in that form. There are three aspects that we are drawing to the readers of attention and they are the aspects that you've already had a discussion this morning. So those being the water reform process is in train. So you've had to make an assumption about when, what those decisions might be, when they might be taken and what impact. And the safest assumption you can make is it's business as usual until you know otherwise. So we're drawing that to the reader's attention. We're also drawing to the reader's attention the point that the chair just made around the construction industry's ability to deal with the ramp-up in infrastructure spend that is being targeted across local government New Zealand. We have less concern We have less concern with Porirua's ability to do that largely because you've tended to deliver the vast majority of projects that you've had in your plans in prior years. And when we've been provided with information about those projects that have been targeted to deliver, at what stage in procurement are they and is there anything in that that causes us concern around the major spend? There isn't, but we are still concerned about the industry's ability to deal with the influx. So we're pointing that out to the reader. And the third category is your water assets. You're largely basing your spend profile using age as a proxy for condition. Wellington Water themselves acknowledged there's some work to do in the first few years to actually improve that information base. And we think that's a critical assumption to draw readers' attention to. So they are the three aspects that are different in our report, but ultimately it's unmodified. And your, your report will be consistent with peer local authorities. Apahut, which is already public, you'll see strong similarity in the wording. And Wellington, which is quite a way off getting close to a draft consultation document. I expect these might be different.
Thank you very much, Grant. Are there any questions that anyone wants to ask of our auditor while he's here? No, Mike, no, there's not, thank goodness for that. We are going to sign the audit letter afterwards, just so that people know. The chief executive and the auditor will sign the audit letter. So, and we've been told what's in it, basically. So with that, it is now, I'm not getting my glasses, 9:21 and I will declare the meeting closed, there being no further business. Thank you, everyone.